Well, it is Tuesday. Got some jams going.
Jonathan's back.
I'm back.
Jonathan.
It's been too long?
It's, I, I'm, I don't know what to do. I'm in my normal seat again.
Yeah, how's that feel?
It feels good. I don't have to worry about producing, doing all the things. You're back.
Your mic is probably low.
Probably is, but also I'm speaking into it directly and clearly. So hopefully everyone can hear us. Do always appreciate everyone tuning in with us.
Absolutely.
Getting a chance to catch up. Jonathan and I got a lot we can talk about, go over here.
We're gonna kind of recap the last, uh, lot of activity that's been going on in Minot.
Yeah, last couple of weeks that you missed out on. You've been gone doing all the things. Where were you at last week?
Uh, I was out of town.
I think that's fair. Did you go on any fun hikes or anything?
I wish. Don't get me started on hikes right now.
Big, big hike guy here.
A big, I wanna be.
Exactly. That's, that's your-
I wanna be a big hike guy.
That's your next, that's like you're by age fifty, you gotta do the Appalachian Trail, right?
The whole trail?
The whole thing.
I'll pass. I don't think, I don't think I'm gonna go that far.
Take one summer off. You can do it.
Nope.
So where do you wanna start today? We got a lot to talk about. We got a big city council meeting from a couple of weeks ago. We can discuss-
We have one coming up. Everyone should know.
Tuesday. That's even, that's, that's an even more important one.
Yeah, but everyone should know that, uh, there is no city council on Monday.
That's true.
That is pushed to Tuesday because of Labor Day.
Yep. Labor Day is Monday.
Cannot work on Labor Day.
No city council on Monday. It will be on Tuesday and it will be at the normal time following a special city council meeting that's taking place at four on Tuesday.
And why is there a special city council meeting?
Well, Jonathan, you see, there's an open vacated city council seat right now and the city-
Wow.
I know. The city is taking-
There's a lot that's happened.
I, it's crazy. Yeah. Last time you were here, they just became a new mayor and now all of a sudden-
There's an empty seat. Crazy.
And so the city's taking applications for it. Applications are due this Thursday. So if you still wanna get your hat in the ring, make sure you do it now.
Do you know of anybody that I know has submitted their, their application? Do I, do you know if anybody that I know has submitted their application?
Nah, probably, but I don't know for sure.
Gotcha.
I cannot say for certain one way or the other.
Interesting.
Uh, I can say that Cole Krueger, who we had on last Thursday, is not applying for it.
Oh, man.
So, so, good effort.
He probably would've been a alright candidate, yeah.
Been great at it, yeah.
They, he had a part, did you ask about his podcast back in the day?
We should've on air, but we talked about it, I think, after the show a little bit, yeah. Thankfully, you, you filled me in on that.
Yeah.
Coming into that situation. So I had a little bit of background knowledge there.
Shout out to Cool.
Right? And, uh, so Tuesday, uh, is the date that will be, that four o'clock meeting is the special, uh, council meeting where they're going to interview the candidates or allow them to speak. I, I don't know. And that was one thing we were talking about a little bit on Thursday. What, what kind of situation do you think is it going to be? Is it gonna just let the candidates come up and say their say? Or do you think it's gonna be a little bit more of an interview format?
Alright, so in an optimal world, I, I, first off, I think it depends on how many people there are. But say there's ten. I think you have a equally divided time and say this is how many, how many minutes you have to introduce yourself? And then we'll give you a couple of questions.
But if there's like thirty?
Right.
Might be a little harder to-
Then I've, yeah, you, they've already submitted cover letters. So at that point, it might be only the ones that, uh, kinda get selected out of that.
Yeah, if they have already narrowed it down at that point or not, or depends on, yeah. I look forward to that one. I, I plan on, I, I might have to skip football practice next Tuesday to go to that one.
Yeah, we gotta talk about football in a minute.
Oh, no.
If you wanna know what's important, Kay hits one oh six for us. Uh, thanks for tuning in. Uh, what's important is the Surrey Football Team.
Is that what they said? Oh, no.
No. They, they want, just listening and to make sure we're talking about what's important on the radio. What's important is Surrey Junior High Football Team.
I am the junior high coach, yep.
Defensive coordinator.
I, yeah. I, I run the defense.
Are you assistant head coach or are you head coach or you know how that goes?
I don't know how that works.
You don't know how that works?
I think he's the head coach. So I, I think, uh, according to the, the Surrey Facebook page, uh, the guy I'm coaching with is the head coach.
Nice.
I'm the assistant, I guess, then.
I love the organization. But anyways, we'll talk about, we might talk about that later. We'll see. That's a good time.
Fun, uh, spoiler alert, I sprained my ankle.
He's so into it. He sprained his ankle.
But, but back to, ba- back to city council.
That's right. Go Mustangs, Miranda sure says, yeah.
Mustangs home game on Friday.
Hey, everyone show up. Go, go support Kyler.
I'll be on the sideline for the varsity game.
Support the, uh-
Surrey Mustangs.
Surrey Mustangs.
Yeah, we need new, new football equipment for next year. Always need new football equipment. But no-
I'll buy you a football.
You're, you're a legend, Jonathan. You'll be on the donor list. I look forward to it. What do you look forward to seeing? Speaking of looking forward, what do you look forward to seeing from next Tuesday's meeting?
Kyler's struggling. He's gonna have to keep me on track. So from the executive session or from the actual-
Executive session.
Well, I mean, first off, I think, but everyone's looking forward to finally, sorry, that was too optimistic. I was gonna say finally having a full council.
Now, come on. Come on.
Man, you know, I, I don't bet, but you, those like polymarkets and stuff like that, they should totally have this in, in that because they're, the chances of us having a full, uh, full council are, it's low. It's so low.
It is, it is-
So I think what will be interesting then, since I kind of am in the camp, I'm not kind of, I'm pretty much, I think I'm ninety percent in the camp that we're not getting a full council.
I, I think I'm, yeah.
So what will be interesting is to see the ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty that you mentioned, uh, candidates, applicants- That applied, get to see their names and kind of get a forward look to what mid, your, uh, next year's gonna look like when actually having these council elections.
It's true.
And the mayor election.
It's true. And we're gonna have to get an idea of who could actually be of this group of people who could run for it then this winter, this fall? For that seventh council seat if they have to go to a special election.
Oh, yeah. They have to go to a special election, right? So will they force that special election or will they just go with six on council? You know more about this.
It sounds like when talking with Blessim and, and, uh, getting a gist from the rest of the council, it kinda sounds like they'll go to a special election if they're not able to commit to it. Because when we were watching that meeting, uh, a big part of the discussion that they were talking about at the meeting was, like, I, I, I think Blessim and Pittner both pointed out, like, hey, there's a real possibility that we might not be able to agree on someone here.
Yeah.
And-
By the time you get that person elected, it's pointless. Like, they're very small. Every decision's a big decision. You don't know when a big decision's gonna come up. But you're not talking about budget and your mid, uh, year election would already would get that seventh person on for the following year's budget. The big stuff's already taken care of. That's crazy.
Yeah, it's, it'll be interesting, but it sounds like that's the backup option if they're not able to agree on anyone, which-
Do we just not talk about that election then if it happens? Just like anti, like be anti-election? Just ignore it completely? Tell people not to vote? Go and like trade an event, an all-day event that day?
Do the Eddie Murphy, uh, from Brewster's Millions, do the, the vote, vote for nobody or whatever it is. Uh, that, that's, yeah.
Go and like-
Vote for no one.
I have, I-
None of the above.
I know we can go and trade a write-in campaign for, uh, somebody.
There we go. Who, who, who's the lucky winner?
Well, I got an idea.
You have a pet?
Well-
We could run her, we could run a pet. That, that's happened and so, there's like a dog that's a mayor in a town in Minnesota or something. Brandon, weren't you joking around like your dog was gonna run for something? We could do that. Write-in campaign for Miranda's dog.
Oh, I have the perfect person that we could do. I, I got two very perfect people that I will not mention.
Two people lined up. Uh-oh.
Yes, it would be, uh, it'd be amazing. I don't know, man. I don't know. I, that's just, it seems outrageous. So, um, yeah, you asked me what I was looking forward to. Resolution, seeing who those names are, seeing, I guess, if we're gonna get that seventh person, I don't anticipate that. So more like seeing who the actual candidates are.
Miranda makes a great point.
Right.
Uh, that special election, the mayor one cost eighteen thousand and so this will cost at least fifteen thousand for another one here.
So I mean, you know-
Most likely.
And this, this is just using words against council people. So that's not always nice. So I apologize in advance.
They do great.
They, yeah, they-
They just don't like each other. Sometimes.
And Kyler. Uh, that's not what I was gonna say. But, uh, you know, they talk about saving money and there's been discussions around sensible ideas that have gotten shut down simply because it would potentially add a cost or something. So maybe this is a time where they can find a way to come together to save the city some money.
Yeah, that would be, that's a, that's a great way to frame it. See if they can find a compromise on someone.
To save the city some money.
City money, yes, of course. I, I, I look forward to finding that candidate.
Right. Lisa Olson, older woman, Lisa Olson asks, what qualifications are the public looking for? Business-friendly, conservative, strong convictions? And that's important.
It is.
Uh, but it's just gonna be a difficult thing.
I, I think last week on Thursday, when I had, we had Cole on the show, he, he had some great points with that of what he was hoping to get out of that person. Someone that could come in and help moderate the council, be able to be a bridge between both sides, someone that's a little bit of more of a moderate figure, uh, and I, I thought that was a great point.
Sounds like Cole needs to throw his hat in the ring.
But I, I, I think those are some great qualities and I, I do appreciate the, the sentiment from Lisa coming in there because I, I think that's something that people should be keeping an eye out for and should voice their opinion for.
Right.
Cause if there is someone that steps up that could fit that role, I, I, I think that someone needs to be given that position at that point.
I think somebody that has applied for it needs to like start campaigning.
Yeah.
Not, not campaigning, vote that deal, saying, just simply saying, hey, these are the things that I stand for. These are what I, what I'm about. And then you might be able to get some public support behind somebody.
Yeah.
Um, because otherwise it's a purely council decision and I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. The difficult part is it's in the middle of budget season. So there's so many decisions that come directly after it that council's going to take heat no matter who they select.
And, and the thing that I'm interested in seeing how it plays out at the future budget meetings, say if they don't select someone, how are those amendments to the budget gonna play out?
Three-three. Like, I mean, there'll be a couple of four, four-twos.
You'll get some six-os in there with some probably like the construction stuff.
But the ones that were, the, there'll be some contiguous ones where there'll be a four-two or whatever, but most of the time, there's gonna be a lot of three-threes. And for better or for worse, that's, that's not saying, we talked about this and it's like, we're so negative about it sometimes.
You're right.
And, um, I like to think of myself as a realist, not as a pessimist.
We live in the world we were given, not the world we fit. Yeah. What is it?
Okay. While you're thinking about that, um, the, what, the, the three-three votes have made it seem like there's two sides, right? And, and at first, because we covered this when there was three new people elected to council and we're like, dude, it seems like there's an old guard, a new guard type of deal. And we would address that and then we kinda got told that maybe we should stop, suggested that by people because, um, it made it seem very divisive. And what we saw also following, not only that, we also saw it back down a little bit. Suddenly there was five two-votes.
Yeah.
There were-
That's what I was gonna say. As the winter progressed last year, it really transformed into something different at that point.
It did. But then as we've gotten recently, ever since like Flock, ever, ever since we lost a council, a member on council-
That's when it, that's when it-
Then it became really apparent because the three-three vote had power. And then you started looking at like Flock. Flock was like one of those notable votes where it was like, hey, we're not gonna get an agreement on this. So let's go and table it and then you start-
Then you had childcare and then you had the liquor license stuff.
And all these things.
And it, it really just snowballed into the summer when the election then came and then you had the campaigns and it, and now we're finally here into August and budget season and-
So I, I think I, if I was looking at my priorities for the, uh, seventh person on council, I, I think continuing in the vein of physical common sense and I-
Physical or fiscal?
Fiscal, sorry. My bad.
Okay.
Fiscal. I, I had it spelled right in my head.
You're good. I had to confirm. I wasn't sure where you were going there.
Fiscal, common sense. Um, and that's going to lead to, when you go and you apply like conservative to the word fiscal, what does that mean? I mean, at the end of the day, we could cut out every single department, save a bunch of money. It's not what we're looking to do.
And that would technically, I guess, fall under the blanket term of fiscally conservative.
Right. It, but it-
But that's a little-
Lacks common sense, right? And so that, I don't think, and I know that I'm using that very broadly, like nobody's planning on doing that.
No.
But I'm just saying, like, I, I'm not about somebody coming on and proposing a ton of cuts and stuff like that. That's not what I'm looking for. Um, I think going and keeping a budget that's close to last year would be a, a great priority for, for the council, uh, a number that's close to last year. I think that's something that's achievable. And so some, somebody that was just common sense fiscally, um, and that's not to imply that any of the members on council are not. I'm just saying continuing in that vein. I think that'd be one thing. I, I think continuing to look at ways that the city can be open. And I hate the term, now I hate the term, open to, to business and open, open to economic development and, and all that stuff. I, at this point, I, I don't really enjoy that term at all. But making sure that there is easy ways, easy might be too loose of a term, but there are straightforward ways, consistent ways, uh, for businesses to be able to get into Minot and succeed in Minot. Not, no decisions made off of existing businesses being here. No decisions made off of, um, well, we already have three car washes, so we can't allow a fourth car wash and we have way more car washes than that. But, but no- nothing like that.
Principle, yeah.
Um, make sure that it's very, very much straightforward. And I don't think anything like that's happened in a while. Um, but making sure that we are very consistent. To reduce the red tape, you, you have to look at that line by line. I don't know what that means. Um, so we have to go and really make sure that that's identified in order to go that far. Um, but if there are things that are holding people back, that is just us being a little bit too aggressive as a city, then definitely look at trying to get rid of some of that stuff.
No, I like that.
Though, I think those would be a couple of the things personally that I am, um, as far as where you fall on a political spectrum, I, I don't think that should matter.
Yeah, it's nonpartisan.
It's nonpartisan, although I think that someone that is consistent with the values, the general values of Minot would be good.
I think that's fair. That's great, Jonathan.
Now your turn.
My turn? I just want somebody to come in and I, I, I frankly, I side with what Cole said last week very heavily. I want someone to come in, be a moderate gap to be able to bridge both sides and will vote with their own personal level of common sense on the issues and take it how they think is best. I, I don't always believe that it is a hundred percent necessary to try to fall in line with the vast majority of everything that-
Right.
The constituency wants because we often, we do live in the world as it is and not as it should be.
Yeah.
And that was, that's what I was thinking of earlier.
There you go.
But no, I, I, I think someone coming in and being able to help bridge a gap between both sides would be very beneficial right now. Just being able to get through some of the things that we need. I, I would love to see that budget be on par with last year's. Um, and I, I really look forward to that candidate coming to the surface that, that would be able to really, really bridge those gaps.
I think it really stinks that the alcohol ordinance is something that's been tabled until a future discussion. Because with, it just adds more pressure to this position. Um, people are, may want to know, I don't know that they will, but may want to know where they stand on such an issue.
Yeah.
Because there's so much way with it. That to me really stinks. Um, I'd be for push, uh, there's no reason why we need to take action anytime soon, other than just bring resolution. I'd be for pushing that out after the next election. Just to take that off of the weight of this individual and potentially being able to get to an agreement.
Just pushing that to next, like July or something.
Yeah, till we have our, whatever our new council looks like, um, with a marriage race and three seats, right?
It's gonna be crazy.
So, um, we, we need to get to seven people and we need to avoid a special election. That's, that's just the end of the day.
Yeah, I agree with that. I, I think we've been discussed, we've been talking about that for a long time that-
Since, since April first.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. April Fools.
Yeah, it's, it's, this is drawn out.
And if there was a special election, they did, it should've been for this position.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
I think the most-
It should've already happened on August fifth.
Yeah, so this should be resolved. It's not, it's not the council's fault that it's not resolved.
No.
It's, this is just what life has dealt with, dealt us. We've gotta get this resolved so conversations can move on.
And here was one really interesting thing from that last city council meeting too, with what, what the council, the city attorney, uh, really discovered in some of the city ordinances and bylaws and how it's not a, it's not a requirement if a citizen petition comes forward for a special election to accept that, to net, to force the special election. They can take it in confidence and say this is what we should do, but it doesn't necessarily mean it will immediately trigger a special election.
Yeah. It's interesting what they, what not, I don't mean this in a negative deal. I don't mean this as a slam towards the city attorney or any city staff, but it's interesting what, what you can find in those ordinances.
Yeah, no.
And it's very difficult to be able to-
Just, just being defined as a modern council versus a council.
Right.
What, what it opens the doors up to at that point. It's pretty crazy.
Right.
It, it really offers a, a, a big gap in, in the potential of how, how the cities run at that stage.
Right. Interesting.
It's crazy. That city council.
Yeah, that, that city council, we'll see what's gonna happen. Um-
Where do you wanna go to next?
You, uh, mentioned something about something going on in Dunceith?
Yeah, there is, uh, some updates we got coming out in Dunceith and the, the debacle of that whole facility up there. It, uh, it, it sounds like the, the lawsuit filing that Charles Hofer has been talking about is imminent at this point. I don't know if it's-
Womp, womp, wah.
It sounds like it should be anytime. Uh, I plan on giving them a call after we're done here to confirm everything and see how it goes, but just some, some, you know, bullet points over this whole thing.
Have you seen any pretty stuff?
I, I, I've seen a little bit and so just to kinda-
Let it go, Kyler.
Some bullet points on some of this stuff that, that, that's going to be coming out here. One interesting thing, it's going to be filed in federal court, not, not state court and he is-
Why is this important?
It, it, it will be taken straight to the, it, it won't have the ability to be bogged down in state court.
Okay.
It won't, it's taking a step out of the equation at that point.
Right.
And also the charges that he's, uh, accusing them of and bringing forward are, a couple of them are federal, uh, charges at that point.
Gotcha.
One of them is a forced-
Alleging.
Yes. Yes, it's, 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 he's alleging civil rights violations, number one, where these pers- people retaliated against his protected speech, uh, deprived him of due process and conspiracy ever, uh, under the, what, the color of state law effectively. And on top of that, uh, he also has a forced labor theory that he's presenting, which, which really brings it into a different, normally this is something that's kind of done under trafficking violations. But the, they're, they're kind of framing this, that they're, the, the way that he was co- allegedly coerced and was threatened and of, you know, not just financial harm, but you know, in some cases, he said he was threatened physically at some points and the, those figures, abuse of the state process to compel his labor and services, you know, and securing and remediating what he described as a, you know, concealed crime scene in some points that was tied to aerospace parts and a number of other things. Some of the interesting connections that have come forward and it, it, it's going to be an interesting thing to see how this plays out in court.
Yeah. Well, when we, uh, hear that, it's, uh, actually-
It'll be an article out.
Yeah, actually filed, there'll be an article that'll come out on that. Um, pretty crazy. Obviously, we had a conversation with the governor end of last year, asked him about it. He said he wouldn't talk about it, couldn't answer questions on it. Because, uh, the word lawsuit or litigation had been brought up and at that point wasn't any room for, uh, him to be able to talk on it anymore. So now-
The point, that was just when litigation was threatened at that stage. And now it's proposed, yeah. That's, yeah, well, and now we're finally looking at what it's going to-
Almost, almost a year later.
Yeah, from when we first picked it up, we, we first looked at it like right around Halloween last year. It was a couple of days before Halloween when we found it and-
Is that, that's when we went to, out to Dunceith?
I think we went to Dunceith like the first week of November.
No way.
Yeah, it was, I, I was just looking at conversations I have with some people. It was at October thirtieth. It was, so we probably found out the twenty-seventh, eighth, ninth of October.
We drove back in the dark.
And we didn't.
So, that's interesting. Um, but I was thinking my talk with the governor was end of last year, but that means it was beginning of this year.
Yeah, it would've been during the legislative session.
You're right. My year's all messed up.
It's crazy, dude.
Almost twenty twenty-seven.
Oh, I mean, yeah, I guess. Closer to twenty twenty-seven than twenty twenty-two?
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so, interesting. Alright, well, let's go to, yeah, I have on my calendar, November fourth, Dunceith.
Yeah, there, yeah, see, there you go. It's crazy how much time has progressed in that ti- in this, this timeframe. But Charles is making some great progress and I really look forward to, uh, seeing where, where this finally goes to, the next stages, maybe.
Have a final result.
Yeah.
And with that, we're gonna go to a quick break. We'll be back in just over a minute.
In the demanding world of oil and gas, precision, safety and efficiency are non-negotiable. Unmanned operator drone services revolutionizes how you monitor, inspect and manage your operations. With cutting-edge technology and expert operators, we deliver real-time data, detailed reports and actionable insights for our valuable clients. Why risk the safety of your team or waste precious time? Our drones access even the most challenging areas with ease, reducing downtime and enhancing safety across your sites. We take the guesswork out of your projects by offering LiDAR mapping and inspection services so that your projects stay safe, on budget and on time. Unmanned operator drone services, where technology meets safety, precision and efficiency. Contact us today to elevate your operations. Yes, pun intended.
Enjoy Minot's finest authentic Mexican cuisine with a view at Me Mexico. The rooftop patio is open and ready for you to enjoy a margarita or other cool refreshment along with genuine mouth-watering Mexican entrees. Me Mexico, South Broadway.
A little bit.
There you go. Hey, so we're back. Um, so we did have Cole on to talk about something happening, uh-
This Friday.
This Friday, is that right?
Yeah. It's the silo bration event.
Alright.
Celebrating the Union Grain Silo Elevator Project that's finally coming to light. Uh, it's been work, work in progress frankly since like twenty twenty-two, but-
It's already done though?
Not quite. It's not all the way finished yet. He doesn't have a set date for when it will be done, but it is nearly finished. It's supposed to-
It's crazy how fast it happened.
It is. Like over the summer, it's just transpired incredibly fast.
Time has transpired.
So make sure, uh, there's still, you can still donate to the cause if you go to ndunionsilos.com. Um, and you can definitely check out the event this Friday. It'll be at Citizens Alley from seven thirty to ten, I believe.
Wow.
And it's, it's-
You got a busy Friday.
I, I know. I'm gonna have to swing by there after, uh, football games.
This was all done by a pri- by private organization, right?
Yep, yep, largely so. And of course, the, uh, artist Guido Van Helton, fantastic artist, been doing this in all over the world. And now this project that he's starting is a state-by-state project. Every state will get one, hopefully. And this is, this is my, our, our version of it. And the closest one with, that there is to us as of now was in Mankato, Minnesota. And that's what helps spur it on, the whole idea of bringing this to Minot.
See, that's a, alright, so this is just how my mind works. It's a genius, uh, business model.
You're not wrong.
Creates value.
Yeah.
And then he's able to go to state to state and like fifty states, he, he'll struggle to do that in his lifetime.
Yeah, no, you're not wrong. This, this was a two-year project effectively. He took most of last summer to go around the state looking for stories.
Right. It's incredible.
Exploring and, and it's, it's really, it's an incredible thing that was made on.
Like, like mentioned, done by a private, this came up in conversation, uh, a couple of times, uh, done by a private, uh, organization, not something that the city is, is, uh-
Funding or anything? Nope. This is all private donations and grant money that they've applied for.
Way to go.
They've raised over what, three hundred thousand dollars has been raised already and they're still hoping to get a little bit more, but they're almost done. And hopefully if this big event goes well this week, Friday, this will become an annual event and we'll have a silo bration every year.
Celebration at Citizens Alley.
Exactly. Haven't been to Citizen's Alley yet?
No.
Not for an event? I haven't been for an event. I've been, I've walked through there in like an off time.
You love it.
It's, it's really neat. It's really neat.
I'm gonna struggle with that alley.
Just where it's at or?
No.
Yeah, that's fair. I get you. Yeah, that's fair. I get you.
Moving on to something else though. Oh, yes.
So, yeah, post, we, we kinda talked about this the last time you were here. And when I had Mike Blessam on, we discussed it a little bit more in depth and you made some good points. And it's, it's the, I don't wanna say, the accusation or the assumption that there is some.
The alleging.
Yes, of, of improprieties in the Minot election from, of mayor.
Have we even had a comment on that one?
Yeah, and it's, it's an interest.
So you don't feel like there was any lack of integrity?
I, I think, I, I will say, worst case scenario, the ballot machine maybe tabulated a handful of votes improperly one way or the other.
That's a big deal.
Probably is.
But I, I, I don't think it. It didn't maybe affect the election, but it's still a big deal.
It should be a hundred percent accurate. I won't deny that.
But, but there, you feel like there is a chance that there wasn't?
For sure. I'll always give it a chance if it's anything electronic.
So you don't have any proof?
I don't know.
Okay, I'm just making sure. I don't know what everything you know.
That's the thing, we haven't seen each other.
So ninety-eight percent chance is right? Ninety, ninety-eight chance?
I would say so, yeah. And if it's not, I would, you know, there might be a two, three votes wrong one way or the other because someone maybe filled in a circle a little improperly.
I see.
The machine didn't tabulate it right. However, this, i- if they're, and I think Alderman Blessam made this point, if there is a time to check the machines, this would be something that would be a great opportunity to do so. Because it was a single item election, it was a.
Nice and easy.
Yes, there's one item on the ballot, you're matching up names. But also at that same point, even if you have people working in teams, co-opping to do this, there's still a chance for human error on some of these two. It's crazy how that works out, isn't it? So.
Nothing's infallible.
No, and, and I, I think, had this been an election where it was, you know, within a handful of votes, I, I think then certainly.
Right.
Necessary, but.
No, I, I hear you there.
I don't believe there were hundreds of votes that were lost or miscounted.
Right, not enough to influence an election and listening to Josiah's remarks on how the, the machines wouldn't always give the success or whatever on the screen. That part's interesting. That, that part would be interesting for us to do stuff that reporters do and actually reach out and see. Like if it's consistent, always giving the same screen and there's a chance that, I mean, you're listening to humans, so they could have also seen something wrong or whatever. I know that people like hearing that.
I genuinely don't even remember what the screen did, one way or the other.
Me either. Yep, so I cannot comment on that. I just remember I was looking for the vote count.
I was, I was too busy worried I was putting the ballot in the right way.
Of course. I always wanted to see how many were thrown that day so far.
Yeah.
And I think I saw nine hundred on each or so.
Well, still great turnout for that election.
It was a great turnout. So is there something that the city needs to go to?
At this point, the ballots are back in the city's hands. I, I don't, under state law, this wasn't close enough to demand an automatic recount. And I, I don't know if at this point, anything is, can be forced into a recount at this point. Maybe it's a possibility of some, you know, minutia way to maneuver through the weeds and get there. But otherwise, I think at this stage, the city would have to call for it and I wouldn't expect that to happen at this point.
Yeah, gotcha.
It's, it's still, it's an interesting thing. I, I don't. I, 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 I feel part of it maybe trying to keep one's name in relevancy. So a- as for future bids for office, just to keep, stay in the spotlight a little bit. And also, you know, I believe there is legitimate concern there on the parties, but at the same time, I don't know what evidence outside of some people saying that they didn't see, that they saw the machines do something one way or the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe affected it, maybe didn't. I don't know. I, I can't remember what the machine did when I put my ballot in, I'm sorry.
No, I, I don't think election integrity, I, I would be on the side that election integrity is not one of the biggest. If we're gonna list the concerns for the city of Minot, for the state of North Dakota, election integrity, in my opinion, is not the top concern. There's a lot of other concerns that I have about it, about the state and about the city, other than that. And so it is kind of frustrating that it is, it's just like, there's just this board where people just try to throw mud on it, you know, and just to like blur the lines everywhere. And hoping, hoping that something will stick. And so do we need to go to complete paper ballots? Do we need to go and get this whole, cause that's part of what that, the goal is there. We've had people on to talk about election integrity and part of the goal is to go to complete paper ballots. That is the goal. And it's so, like again, you've already mentioned, human error can still happen. You, you're not getting rid of the possibility of error. You're getting, you're not getting rid of the possibility of manipulation.
Not at all.
People can manipulate stuff.
Yep.
Maybe you're decreasing the percentages.
Cause in those cases, you'll have partisan board members, one from each side, canvassing these things. But then look how many, if you're encompassing that across the entirety of the country, look how many individual people you're having to find that are A trustworthy and B able to do this.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And then you're counting and hopefully you can get it counted in one night and maybe you can. I don't know how that would work out in that regard. Especially if it's a national election where you have a ton of down ballot things as well that you have to deal with. But maybe it's something that could be done, but also we have more people now in this country than we have at any point prior. So it, I feel like that's, it's, as much as we want to think that it should be something to expedite the process, it may end up being something that slows it down more in, in other ways.
Most likely still be handled by the auditor's office. So if you're already concerned about, first off, I'm not concerned about the auditor's office. But if you are concerned about the auditor's office, it's still gonna be handled by the same office. So if you think that there's a level of corruption there or whatever it might be, it's still going to be there. I just don't see how it would be completely productive in the systems that we have in place, perhaps in other systems. The way that they have them set up, maybe there's a, maybe there is a higher chance or.
Or like, I'll give you this, like for some of those ones where you're voting on the machine.
Yeah, yeah.
You have to hit the button on the machine and it's literally all electronic.
I could see concern there.
A little bit different in that situation, but with how we have it set up, it's a paper ballot where you fill in the circle of next to the name you wish to vote for. And then that ballot is placed into a machine where the machine tabulates where the cir, where the filled-in circle is next to.
Yeah, no, I think it's, and it's more verifiable. So if you actually do have a contest that you wanna bring up on it, way more easy to verify rather than, well, the machine says you voted for this or however that verification process would work for those type of machines. Yeah.
Or back, you know, we can even go twenty-five years ago at this point and talk about the, the hanging Chad issue in Florida for the two thousand election. Where you had people that were, you, you had to use like a.
Back when every website began with W.
WWW, but everybody had to use a hole puncher effectively to, to vote for who you wanted to on a little, little paper ballot. And sometimes the, you can't, the punch doesn't go all the way through. Sometimes it's indented and now you're having to judge what's a vote and what isn't at that point.
And it's all based on technicality.
Yeah.
Cause even if it's like you can know what they wanted to vote for, but maybe they didn't do it thorough enough.
How do you prove intent of a vote at that point?
Well, you could talk to our AG.
Yeah, there you go. He'd have a good idea, but if any, if any attorney general did, it'd be.
Yeah, they, they are good at understanding intent. So, yeah, very interesting for sure. Well, I, I think that's something that needs to be.
We'll follow it for sure, yeah.
Yeah, well, maybe we will, maybe we won't, but glad we talked about it. Glad it's been brought up and maybe that one, that's a topic that can be put to rest and we can move on. Because I don't think that's one that we want to have consistently coming up.
No, but one neat thing, change of subject here that's happening tonight, there's a town hall on the Sentinel missile project.
That's right, yeah.
Yep.
That's kind of big.
That is. I think that'll be interesting. I know yesterday.
Where's that happening at?
Here in town. I believe at Ann Nicole Nelson Hall, I'd have to check, but Senator Hoven was in town yesterday and he met with some leaders. I, I know Mayor Janser, I think people with the EDC were there and they, they'd met with him to discuss some things. And now there's going to be a big town hall the night. I believe I also saw Senator Kramer was going to be there tonight, so it sounds like we'll have quite a few people.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's happening tonight at Ann Nicole Nelson Hall from five thirty to seven thirty PM. So that, that is a big deal if you wanna learn about something that's gonna definitely affect Minot.
Yeah, undoubtedly, that's something that we're gonna have to look forward to over the next decade, something that's going to be really affecting us. I mean, I mean, at least indirectly and in a lot of cases directly over the next decade. It's, it's going to bring in people, we're going to have to deal with, potentially deal with, you know, more housing issues. And frankly, it's gonna be big for the economy in the ci, in the city with the influx of people. And then just the sheer amount of construction going around, on around because of it. I, I, I can't wait to see that ball get rolling because again, as I think has been an indirect theme throughout this episode, we live in the world as it is, not as we wish it were.
Yeah, both Senator Hoven and Senator Kramer, Kramer are scheduled to be there along with a lot of representatives from the Air Force Base.
Makes sense.
And the Minot Chamber Economic.
This might not be fair.
Yep.
Does this count as a town hall for them?
Oh, Kyler.
I know.
Kyler is going through stuff.
I said this might not be fair. I, I predicated my question with it.
Predicated it?
No, that's wrong. That was wrong. Yeah, prefaced, there we go.
Yeah.
See, we both struggle with words today.
Yeah. That's the only reason why I pointed out. No, I don't think it does. Can I ask him any question I want?
I don't know. I doubt it, but I don't know. That's what I was, guess I was pretty much boiling my question down to.
Cause if we can ask him any questions we want, I got somebody that'll let him know, show up.
Be, be a lot of people we can let know, give the tip off to at that point. If it's that case, I might have to show up too.
You might actually show, you might skip football practice for that too.
I can't today, not, not, not the day after a game. I can't miss football practice today.
Alright, interesting, but let's talk about that. Let's finish off with that.
You wanna talk about?
I wanna talk about, yeah, where, this is the hangout for the Surrey Mustangs Junior High Team. First off, defensive coordinator.
Yes.
Had a rough day, sprained his ankle. Do you wanna mention score or not?
We did not win our first game.
You did not win your first, but, but what did you win?
The turnover battle on defense.
Defensive coordinator led the champs to win the.
We won the turnover battle and these guys.
They're the turnover battle champs.
Yes, and one thing I gotta pre, I gotta say too, now I wanna use that word. Yes, one thing I gotta say too, we got thirteen total kids, one started late, so we only had twelve playing yesterday in nine man football. These kids were in shape and ready to go.
That's awesome. Way to go, kids. That is awesome.
And we, we got, I'm, 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 following a win, I'm gonna shout you guys out if you actually end up watching this part of it.
Yeah.
I, I told them I'd go through and name them all off individually and shout them out in a podcast. So after our first win, I'm gonna have to.
Alright.
You're gonna have to name drop everyone at that point.
Yeah, well, we'll look forward to that. That's gonna be a good time.
We got beat on a couple of big plays. We had some short fields that we got.
Learning.
Yeah, exactly. It's work in progress.
Once the offensive, offense and defense gets on the same page as they say, then there we go. They already know how to win the turnover battle, so that's a huge win.
Exactly, know how to find that football. Go do that peanut tillman punch it out kind of thing.
That's right, man. He's got all the cliches.
Speaking of football too, today's like roster, I mean, no one cares, but this is like roster cut down.
You guys aren't cutting anybody, are you?
No, not for, no, not for high school, for the NFL, it's roster day.
Yeah, I saw, I saw one player that got cut.
Who got cut?
Shailu.
Oh, he didn't even get drafted.
Sanders. He'll probably, do you know why he got cut? You actually don't know this, actually.
Good, I don't know.
No, I actually have news that Kyler doesn't know.
Reason, what is it?
Yeah, because he punched a dude.
Okay, fair enough.
So they were blocking, the, the one guy might have taken his block too far. Shailu didn't enjoy that and so he, he, he punched him, got ejected from the game.
I'm sure he'll end up on a practice squad somewhere for a couple of years and he'll, he'll, yeah, I, I don't expect him to be. But digressing, you see who did get signed? Carson Wentz to the Minnesota Vikings.
I thought that was neat.
I'm just saying, if this happened like five, six years ago, can you imagine the sheer volume of Carson Wentz Vikings jerseys? That would be seen in North Dakota.
So they won't be seen now.
Not as a backup, I bet the Vikings won't push it. If they're smart, the Vikings are gonna push Carson Wentz jerseys into every shields in North Dakota.
Yeah, well, they, they, they have a marketing department, they'll figure it out, but does JJ McCarthy stay healthy enough?
See, here's my, as, as a Vikings fan, here's, here's my thoughts on how this is gonna play out. JJ McCarthy starts the season, he plays, you know, okay, you can tell he's a rookie, then he gets hurt. And he's only, and, and it's like week two or week three.
Okay, early.
And then the Vikings go overseas for two games back to back. They play in Dublin and in London. And Carson Wentz suits up and starts those games and he just goes lights out. And then they have the bye week and McCarthy's healthy and now it's, it's a classic Viking scenario where they have the old vet and then the younger guy and now McCarthy comes back and he keeps going.
To be fair, Kyler's actually is a pessimist.
I think I am. You don't know where this is going.
I already know, I already heard this part though, that JJ McCarthy plays the two games here, gets injured, then Carson Wentz plays overseas. So all the North Dakota Viking fans can't even go see him play because the only games he plays are overseas.
They'll be able to because later in the season, after the Vikings have a really tough stretch of AFC North teams and McCarthy's struggling, they throw Wentz back in because the Vikings are still in playoff contention.
There's one thing Carson Wentz can do is get you into the playoffs.
Here's the thing, yeah, he goes and shreds it and they, they're killing it. They win a playoff game. Maybe they even make it to the NFC championship game and then.
Carson Wentz gets injured.
He just lays an egg, like thirty-five, seven Vikings loss, I can feel it in my heart.
Cause that's.
That's the most Vikings thing.
That's most Vikings and that also that's the most Carson Wentz thing.
Yeah, have, have an old, you know, crusty backup come in, lead the team to playoff success, but then have just the most heartbreaking defeat ever.
Right, like. I, I don't know, it might be close. That game might be close. What might happen is that like driving and under pressure and just heave a ball.
He just chucks a duck up there.
Kind of reminiscent of Brett Favre's scenes.
Yeah, yeah, I can see that.
Yeah.
I can totally see that happen. And then everyone's like, okay, back to McCarthy.
Yeah, back to McCarthy.
And then he gets hurt again.
Is he gonna always be hurt? In your, in your timeline, he's always hurt?
I, I, I've got a sneaky feeling he's gonna be a Teddy Bridgewater two point O.
Oh, Teddy Bridgewater was decent.
Yeah, we're all gonna love him. He's gonna be good, then he's gonna get hurt.
He's gonna get hurt.
We're gonna be sad. It's the Vikings.
Yeah.
Anything else you got for me, Jonathan?
I think all the important stuff's been covered now.
I think we're, we're rolling. We're back. Jonathan's back in town. Make sure you're keeping an eye on our sites for an article coming out on the Dunceath debacle update and that whole situation. Gonna have something coming out and hopefully if things really get progressing there, you're gonna start seeing some other things pop up elsewhere too.
There you go.
Oh, we got one more thing.
Dude, Kyler.
Talked to you about the Rayho plea agreement.
Yeah, I was fine not talking about that one.
I bet, I bet you were.
That one, it doesn't make sense to me, but I guess I'm not an attorney.
I'm not either. I'm not smart in that stuff at all, but my, my.
Seems like it doesn't make sense to anybody involved except Rayho.
Yeah, that's what I'm interested in seeing on September fourth, which is the hearing that'll be set for that. Where the judge can either accept or reject the plea deal and I, I, I really look forward to seeing how that plays out.
September fourth, that's next week, man.
It is, it's crazy. It's what, Friday or Thursday?
Thursday.
The next Thursday, yep. That's gonna be a big one. That's gonna be incredibly telling. Depending on what time it happens at, we'll have that news to you on Thursday as well. I, 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 again, I, I've said it in the, my, my, my thoughts that got shared around a little bit.
Oh, yeah, they did.
I've, I've said my take on it, it feels.
That's fair, me too.
It, it feels unnecessary.
Feels unnecessary.
To be going to this place.
Stu says Kyler needs a haircut.
Probably. He's probably.
I need one too.
He's probably right. I should get a haircut.
Should we give each other haircuts?
That would be entertaining. Just buzz it then.
Yeah, you can cut my hair first.
Do you trust me to cut your hair?
No, but I definitely don't wanna be the one going second because the one second is taking out digits. The one first is going to care.
Oh, my Atlanta. That would be an incredible situation to see play out. I, I, I really want to, I don't know if I wanna cut your hair. We're getting my hair cut by you, but I think that'd be funny to, funny to film.
It'd be hilarious to film. Alright, but so Marvin Nelson drops some stuff, but don't believe that there's actual fraud going on with those ballots. But having a picture of the actual ballots available easily would take away the argument and assure people that elections are on the up and up.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Making that available somehow.
Can't make that, yep, can't argue that point.
Not sure if it's feasible, whatever. I'm sure it's more thought out than what I've thought it through, but yeah.
I like the sentiment there for a fact.